We can double check this, but I show 102.85%.
102%?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong column. I'm sorry.
Okay.
95.93%.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. 95.93%.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna not report this month because until we get the encumbrance, it's all done. Like, you really don't know.
Anything for you to...
County courts at 90%, Superior 93, the joint courts at 97, and the parks at 80%.
I'll be reporting next month.
My role okay.
I'll be reporting next month.
All right. Moving on to the auditoriums report.
I sent out the reports, so on January 11th or something like that. Do you have any questions coming on any of those reports? Great. I'm asking about the transferring the insurance lines like we have been for the last couple of years from the departments. Like, Commissioner's budget and Area Plan, 911, all the different ones. Am I supposed to still do that and put them in the insurance plan? I have one question now. We still left the $20,000 into, for Carol Manor. They do not have the money to transfer, so...
We'll have to wait. Wait and wait until, you know, a time, and later in the year when money funds may be available.
Okay, so do I need a motion for them to tell me to do that?
You should absolutely.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
We can wait until a time later in the year when they get funds available.
And then transfer the rest of them?
Correct. It's not, do we call it a transfer? Whatever it is.
Three lines, yeah.
I just write the check.
I, yeah.
I call it a transfer, so it's not a true transfer.
Got it.
And then I have on my...
Yeah, let's... Yeah, so we do have a motion by Josh, seconded by Paul, to go ahead and transfer the insurance lines minus Carol Manor pending funds. Any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Another about insurance. I'd like to set up a meeting, Josh, between you and me and Bill Sylvester from our insurance, Anne Kelly Schimmel from Community Corrections. She's asked to talk to him too.
What do you think? Just let me know.
When are you available on Thursdays?
On meeting day, Thursdays? I'm here all day, so I could do that next month, or if you want...
I should need a time before that.
Then just, yeah, we'll just figure that out.
Okay. And then rainy day, we had not talked about that. I didn't know if I was supposed to do a transfer from County General to, from wherever, to rainy day.
I think we probably have, we have a little discussion on that, whether we're gonna transfer or not with the upcoming GO being finished early. We probably are gonna have to access that, those funds for the new...
Actually, I can split it on...
You mean general funds?
Just to kind of remind you guys of other...
I'm okay not doing a transfer this year.
Me too.
Sippee was okay with not doing one.
Oh, but I mean, the future, if we need it.
Yeah, we'll just stay in there.
Yeah, if you need to take any action on it, if you're doing nothing, that's fine.
Okay. And then in January, we've always done the mileage rate. I've checked it out on the web, and it's still 49 cents. That's what we are now, so can I have a motion that we keep it the same?
So moved.
So...
Motion by Josh Blue, who seconded it.
Taylor.
Any discussion on the mileage rate? All those in favor of leaving the mileage rate at 49 cents per mile, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, pass this, Senator.
And then our salary ordinance, version two. Version one was the original. I do need you to... Well, we'll just fill over these. We had some changes with the First Deputy and Assessor's office getting the increase for being a GIS person and not working on Wednesday afternoons to $48,600. I didn't really know how to put it on here, so it's on the assessor and it's also in the playbook. 64 hours for the assessor, and eight hours is coming out of the playbook. Doesn't mean that they work Wednesday afternoons, and I wanted to make sure you guys knew that. So playbook says GIS specialist, $25.96 an hour for eight hours, and then so I mean, actually her pay will be, be one check. It's not gonna be two different checks. Just, I didn't know how to put it on that. Is that okay, how I've got it on there for explanation?
Should we change, should we, like, put something on First Deputy, like, First Deputy GIS trained, or so we know that that person with this position has the GIS education and that's why they're getting more?
Well, it's back here on the underneath of playbook. We, we know that.
Are you talking about the salary ordinance or the job description?
Salary ordinance, and the First Deputy.
We have a job description that says the same.
Yeah, that's definitely gonna be my point as well.
The concern was if that position changed people, that we didn't want to be able to do the existing...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But it's split up here. That way you know that there's a GIS specialist involved.
Okay.
Okay, so that's okay? Then the third page, I had to change these chief probation officers. I had it, I don't know, but anyway. Those are the correct ones. I've checked with the corps also, and that's by statute, it's not by what you guys did. Okay? Security officers, we put that in there, 1923, I think we did. Okay, that in the last meeting, but I have to put it on here. The Health Division, they had some grants, so I changed the 1159 to 1161 to show that that is their grant. And the only one that is different should, we're gonna have another version probably on this one, is the public health nurse. They're telling me that that's not the right amount, but according to what they had put in for their additionals, or in their budget, excuse me, that's what it divided up to be. So she has an additional to be advertised to get her rate up where the grant says that she should be making.
So 33 is, they say is not correct?
Yes, they say it's not correct, but I told them that's what she has to have right now, and we can get it, we can always pay correctly, yeah. So those are what the grant says, and I've checked it with the Health Department and Dr. Becker. And the other concern was the 1168, the part-time nurse, so they're also checking that one out, but I put it as the same as 1159. It's $28 an hour. And then PSAP at 1172, you guys changed the part-time from 1115 to 1823 per hour, and that's part of the reason for this version.
I just wanna say one thing on that real quick.
Okay.
Did my interlocutor, would you like to...
No, I think I'm done.
So I wasn't here for this discussion last time, where it was pretty lively, interesting. I just wanna, I don't know if the department heads here, but... So the salary ordinance is not the budget, and I just wanna make that super clear, that you're, you've been given a budget, and then that, this rate is used within that budget. So I just don't wanna get to a point later in the year where we say, you know, we've used all of our part-time, and now we've gotta change it. So, I mean, that was not the intent, as I understood it, and the action wasn't taken. So if everybody was paid the maximum and it's burned through halfway through the year, that's not a, that's a management issue that we just wanna make sure that we're not...
Wasn't the same as...
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we don't have any issues later in the year. Thank you.
Okay, so that's, we also went out to meeting without signing this ordinance, although it was okay in the minutes. The first part of the ordinance was not signed, so we've got...
Pass this one.
If you'd like to. We've got, we've got both sets together, so the one will not get missed. They're stable. Do I have a, I think we have a motion to...
Motion to approve the salary ordinance 2023-104.
Version two.
Version two.
Second.
Okay, motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Taylor Five, to approve the salary ordinance version two. Any other discussion or questions on this?
I will tell you also, I don't think I highlighted them, but the sheriff gave me figures on the different people in the slots, so that was nice. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving salary ordinance 1-18-24, version two, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you.
And in front of you, we should have a new 2023-102, or at least the last version that I received this morning, to make sure that we do have the right one. You guys okayed this, approved it at the last meeting, but somehow we signed the wrong one. So I don't, I don't know what happened, that we had the right one, and so I think all we need to do is...
I agree. My understanding is that, well, I know, because I was involved, that there were two versions, the old and the new. You approved the new. Guess what, you signed. You signed the old, so this is nothing more than getting the paperwork straight on an action you've already taken and approved.
So just need to pass one of these? Josh, you...
I got it.
And make sure I get these back. I want all of it. Everything you signed today, I need to get back.
That's on Scott. It's here, so you have it.
I get to walk in front of this camera again.
Next thing is Area Plan appointment. The only thing that I have received is one, and it's from Sharon, that she works down at the Child's School office, and she wrote a letter, and I don't think I do.
I'd like to table this for another month. I haven't had a chance to speak to her, or is she here? No, I'd like to...
Yeah, she's in the back.
There she is? Oh, hi.
There she is. You still wanna give...
Other specific questions?
I just have not had adequate time to prepare for this. That's just my personal feeling, and I have not prepared myself to make a motion, but like, I'm...
What's our, what's our requirement for appointment? Is there a timeframe on that?
No, it's in the seat at the moment. So this is not something being placed, but seat's already made, there's no time on it, but you don't have that representation, so that's the, would be the only concern, but there is no...
Just, just given, given all the stressors that are being placed on the area plan, I think this is a very, very significant appointment, and I think we just can take just a hair more time to review this and have deep conversations with candidates, because it's a very consequential decision. So I move to, I move to table the appointment to next month.
I'll second that.
So are we still taking applicants?
So we have a motion by Josh, seconded by Paul, to table the APC appointment until next month. Any questions or comment on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, we will revisit this next month.
Now, within that organization, do spokes apply for the position, or are they recommended by the Area Plan Board?
We haven't received a, a recommendation from the Area Plan Board that I'm aware of, but it is our appointment.
It's your appointment.
It's just our appointment, okay.
I asked specifically for a recommendation, it was not given.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from you, Beth?
Seems like there is, but I can't think of it, so I'm done.
What about the inkeeper's tax? We, we did...
We did that.
We signed that.
I am sending that back around, because there's two cards to the salary ordinance, so we need to sign the front card to, I've gotta change that.
Okay, thank you.
No action was taken on the keeper's tax, or, or do we need to know anything for the rest?
We signed it.
But, I mean, do we need any motion?
No, we did that last one.
Okay. We just signed it. The action was taken, we just need to take it forward, so, got it.
Okay. Thank you, Beth, for that. Next item on the agenda is Denise Beach with the Veterans Office.
Good morning. We have one that, I gave you one that's in that one. I hired in at the Veterans Office in '22, March of 2022, and it was advertised, starting pay would be 12 an hour. After the training, it would go to 13. Due to the budget, after a week, the former person that had been there was told she had to quit. My pay went from 12 an hour down to 1150 an hour for 90 days. After that, it went to 12 an hour. I, it was posted, after the training period, I'd go to 13. I am still waiting to go to at least 13 an hour. In the budget this year, it shows that I quote, "got a raise of $300 and some dollars." It actually, when you divide it out, I actually lost 2 cents an hour. I went down to $1198. Larry has budgeted 14, he wanted me to get 14 last year and 15 this year. When I went to the Commissioners' meeting the other day, they told me that he could pay me whatever he wanted between that 11 and the 15. And then at the end of the year, when it was getting close to pay, to do an additional or a transfer. And I told him that. He's been sick, and he's actually sick again today and went to the ER yesterday. And yesterday meant he was in, he had too much, so we didn't get to talk about any of what was on the Commissioners' meeting. My thing is, is I don't understand what you were saying. This is all new to me, actually. But if he can pay me, we'll just say the 15 an hour, at the end of, say, September, when our money is gone, are we going to be able to get a trans, do the transform or an additional appropriation so that I can continue to work? He's being told the office needs to be open more, like, when he's gone. I don't mind working the hours, but I wanna get paid, and I wanna get paid what I am worth. And that is, I'd like to have my pay increased, and all, if I get 15 an hour, it'd only be $2,500 for the year. And that is actually, would be, if you look at it, is actually would be spread over 20, or two and a half years, 'cause I didn't get the raise in '22, and I didn't in '23, and so far in '24, I'm not, I, like I said, I lost money. So I just would like, I mean, $1198 is not much money to get paid nowadays. And we all work to get paid, we all have a budget at home, and I just wanna be paid what I'm worth, and know, down the road, if he pays me, like, the 15 an hour now, I wanna be able to know I'm gonna be able to work when that $9,900 is gone, basically. I don't know what to do. And like I said, Larry and I haven't been able to talk since the Commissioners' meeting at all, and there may be some things that he should've been able to pull me that hasn't been able to, but I know what he's told me. He had put it in our budgets the last two years, and I know what I got. And like I said, I got cut 2 cents, which isn't much, but it's 2 cents, and I didn't get a raise.
So how, I apologize, how are you calculating the 2 cent per hour cut?
It shows if you take the $99.70, divide it by 26 pay periods, and then divide that by 32 hours, it's $11.98. And last year, we had it, so it was...
How many hours are you working a week?
I work 16 hours a week right now.
That's, that's where I, that's where I...
And, like, right now with him being sick, I should be working more. Like, today, I should go home for lunch and come back, but if I do that, then, okay. If I keep working, having to do this with him being so sick, it's just gonna cut into my pay more, and when I take time off, I don't make it up. And like, last week, last year, I took the whole last week off, because I did not wanna have to borrow from this year to get paid for what I worked last year and all. And I should not have to do that at all. And I just wanna, A, get paid what I'm worth, and B, know that down the road, if I do work more, and I wanna know I'm gonna get paid, and I'm not gonna go three or two months without working at all. So I want, I'd like to know that down the road, if we need to do a transfer or an additional appropriation, we're gonna be able to do it, and I'll still be able to keep my job.
I need to say something.
Sure.
Taking the week off at the end of the year does not really help. I mean, because that year, that is paid out next year, and I understand what you're saying, but then this year, the next, last year is going to be paid out next year's too, so it's just kind of a continuing thing.
But why should I have to keep borrowing from year to year?
You're not borrowing. That's not what it is.
Here's how, this is what the problem is, is you're, you're working too many hours a week, and that is why it's cutting into the wage. We budgeted a certain amount, and if I, I don't know, have, has the Veterans Office always worked the 16 hours a week? Why am I remembering?
Yes. The lady that worked before me worked 16, and I've worked 16.
So that's what the problem is, is that you either have to work less hours at the $15 an hour, or you have to work the more hours at the $12 or $13 an hour.
Or could we...
From a level of understanding here, there's two documents. The salary ordinance says what you can be paid per hour, says what every employee can be paid per hour. The budget says how much, how many, how much money is in the line. So the council says, gave the range and said, you, you have this much money to spend, how much, how you spend it is up to the department head. So that line went up by 4% this year.
$384, which we got none last year, and the year before, we got none. So $384 has been spread over two, would have been over two and a half years. That is ridiculous. I'm sorry. And all, and if, why can't there be more money for this? Why is it only $9,900? Why can't you guys say, okay, Larry's gone, we'll just say, why can't you allow more money? I guess is what I'm asking.
It's just not how budgeting works. It's not how our policies work. We can't just give people more money because someone is gone in their department.
Well then, I agree, then, if she's gone and she can't have another hours, then the office has to be closed. And that has been something that people have complained about.
Yes. Larry's been told that.
And I'm not saying that that's wrong, and I'm saying that, you know, Mr. Beach, you know, if there comes a problem where he is ill and cannot be in the office, then somebody has to come to, I would say, the Commissioners first, and then they come to us and say, what are we gonna do? This is the first I have heard about Mr. Beach not being there.
Yeah.
I mean, he's going some health problems right now, and he's...
It's just been in the past, though. He has made appointments in the afternoon when she's not here. So as HR, I explained to him, maybe he needs to put them in the morning while she is, yeah, where she is here. The other thing too, he posted that before, what was that, two years ago, Denise?
Yeah, March of, I hired in March of '22, and he, he advertised it at $12, not knowing what his rate was going to be. He just, he does not understand it.
See, we didn't advertise that rate. He did. So I, I don't feel like, your point that we should appropriate more money in the line is a legitimate point. That's your right to make that point.
I mean, is it right for some...
But, let me just finish.
I'm sorry.
But I don't feel like I should be obligated to what Larry advertised two years ago in the comment, because we didn't advertise that rate.
And neither did I.
But it had to be an approved by someone.
No.
No, the, the, he, he has the right to set the rate of pay. That's his prerogative as a department head. He doesn't, he does not set...
Within the salary.
Within the guidelines.
Within the salary.
Within the salary. He does not have control over what the, what the appropriation is for payroll. So if, for, so if you have X amount of dollars and you pay the maximum rate of the part-time, there are fewer hours to be available. If you pay the lowest of the range, then there would be more hours available of part-time labor. This is not just your department, this is courthouse, or throughout the entire category. So that, that, that part-time rate is set by every department head that has part-time staff within the, within the guideline, or within the salary.
Well, you know, if I look at this, right now, there's 99, 6, 99.70 in that line. If we paid $15 an hour times 16 hours a week, that would be $240 a week, or $12,488. So wouldn't one way to fix this be to put $12,488 in the line so that she could make $15 an hour for 16 hours a week? Would that be one way to fix it?
That's one way.
Well, I'll make that motion then.
Sounds all right to me.
I'll make that motion. If, if you guys don't want to second it, that's, that's what we...
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor by Paul Ryder, seconded by Doc Stoffer, to increase the part-time line in the V A office to allow fifteen dollars per hour for sixteen hours a week.
I mean, that's the most I work.
For her own man, being in worse than more health and she's going to have to fill in.
It equals twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll just say one thing, Doc, I don't disagree that like, this is the first we're hearing about it and I don't want to make a rushed decision on it. And, cause we don't have a rush problem. Like this doesn't have to get decided today, but if we, I mean, because we can continue down this road for nine months and not run out of money in the line. But as a matter of policy, we need to figure out what, what we're doing in the veterans' office. Because he's a sal, Beth's advised me, she's a salarier, excuse me, salary, he is salary.
I believe salary.
We, we believe that he is salary at this time. So when he takes off, we, we need to figure out how, or there has a medical absence, you know, whatever the problem is, figure out how that office is going to be staffed, but that conversation is never brought to us. Like this was just, I'm the department, all that we've ever been told is I'm the department head, I need this many part-time hours for my department function. But like this is a.
We're not that we're in difficulty at the end of the year, last year, budget wise.
Not very much, I mean, I got transferred a little bit over to.
I mean, we had a thousand dollars left over from the burial of soldiers from last year that I don't know. Like I said, I haven't been able, we haven't talked since the commissioner meeting. I didn't know if that could be transferred to my pay for this year. I don't know how any of this works and.
You can't, you can't do one gun to, one line to another unless you have a bill for encumbrances and it has to be for what that line is. So that would not work, Denise, I would have brought that up to you.
From a budget standpoint, I'd like to make the comment that we are sitting in January of twenty twenty-four and you're already wanting, because someone walked in the door, we gave the same amount across the board to people part-timing. So once again, you're going to give her more or whoever the position is and you just up that part-time's person's wage when we just went through a budget cycle and figured all this out.
But we didn't get it figured out because for three years.
Yes, we did, we gave all the part-time people a range during the budget.
Well, there's some sort of disconnect then with, with Larry not, I, I mean, eleven ninety-eight an hour.
But that's a management problem then, that's not a payroll problem.
There's, there's no guarantee of hours within a department for a part-time employee.
Correct.
I appreciate, I appreciate that they, they work the hours that they work and they, they step in and, and do the things that need done. But it's, it's not for me to guarantee sixteen hours a week. Or that's a management issue.